Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, October 15th. As we start our meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order and reset our Pledge of Allegiance, please. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our mission statement, the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to our Student Advisory Council.
So recently at Wakefield, there's been a lot going on on the sports front. Today, there was a cross-country meet. Wakefield swept Watertown and all the girls and boys ran really well. There was also a volleyball meet today, which is still going on, so we'll have to see how that turns out. But, you know, in the next week, the team is hosting a game with Melrose on the 21st to raise money for the Dana Farber Cancer Institute, because one of our own students lost her mother to cancer recently. The swimming team won at Belmont, and they're six and one for the season, and they recently volunteered at the Best Buddies Walk. We're working at the craft table. Football unfortunately lost on Friday, but they're going to be playing Watertown this week. And on to more activities. Recently, the Tri-M Music Honors Society inducted new members, and marching band went to Baltimore for a regional championship. Also, Best Buddies participated in the walk this weekend, and the Social Awareness and Interact Club is planning on collecting candy this Halloween to send over to the troops. That's about it.
Great, thank you. I was also at the Nesba competition on Saturday for the marching band. The marching band did phenomenally well. They came in first place, had the highest score of the evening, they were 90.1, and which is a very, very high score for this time of year, and the event went very well. They're also hosting again this Saturday, Fire for Mic competition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2019 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the September 10th, 2019 school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting and the September 24th, 2019 school committee student services subcommittee meeting as presented.
Motion's made and seconded. Any question, comment? All those in favor? I voted unanimously. And budget items.
So you have some budget reports in front of you tonight. These are financial statements through September 30th of 2019. You see that all these salaries are encumbered, the utilities are encumbered. You'll see, we're just waiting for the grants, the title grants to come in. They were all filed in early October, so the one negative that you see in the aid line, that'll be corrected when we get the sped IDA grant in.
Great. No areas of concern?
Not at this time.
Wonderful. Anything else? Payroll warrants?
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 10 and number 12 as presented.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? People can get paid this week, yay! Okay, moving on to chairman's comments. Doug had sent each of you individually a bullet list of points that he'd like to make for his evaluation and how they relate to the rubric. He did a nice job trying to, you know, put everything in the right places for us, to make it easy for you. I would request that everybody have those back to me no later than one week from tonight so that I can prepare the compiled report for our meeting on the 29th, when we actually have the actual evaluation process that comes to an end. That is available, and, you know, any questions you have, please get, or stay on top of it because a week from today is when I really need them back, please. We want an update on Blatt's field. I see construction out there, and you're posting great pictures, so.
Thank you again for having me. First of all, just before we get into updates, I just wanted, you know, again, give a shout out and thank you to all the parents and people that made this possible. We had so many softball parents, most notably Bob Burnett and Dave Story really did a lot of planning behind this, and the town of Wakefield, all of our town administrators and all of our taxpayers for getting behind this, so it's really been a great thing. Renovations have been moving along very, very fast. We had the company, they're called Sports Turf, they're one of the best in the business in regards to what they do. They came and laser graded the field, so previously the field was actually kind of sloped in towards the diamond, which is why we had all those puddles and it was just really bad, so they completely laser graded the field, seeded it with very high-quality rye seed, I was told by Dennis Fazio. And you can see it's really coming along great. They also have graded the infield, and next steps would be to start working on the, they're gonna pour the cement for the dugouts, get to work on the dugouts, the fencing, and the last, last piece of it would be the actual infield to install the clay. So they're really moving along very fast. If you take a look out there, the grass is coming up, it's definitely an exciting time for Wakefield softball and our softball girls.
Will it be playable this spring?
It will be playable this spring, as long as everything, knock on wood, no issues, it should be playable this spring, yes. The outfield is really coming along great. Like I said, the next thing, they're gonna pour the concrete for the dugouts, they're gonna tear down the existing backstop and put up a new one, and then the last piece would just be to actually pour down the clay for the infield.
Excellent. Questions? Brendan.
Are there sprinklers, Brendan?
So they didn't put in a full, all-out irrigation system, but they did connect waterways to it, and they have like sprinkler heads that they are attaching for the outfield and infield, so they do have water there. They didn't go all out with the complete irrigation system, though.
So it's seeded and ready to go?
Seeded, ready to go, the seeds are sprouting, it's nice and green, it's really coming out great, so it's.
It looks great.
Yeah, it does, and I know the girls in Cristolios is now teaching up the high school, his classroom's right over there, so I know he's excited, the kids are excited. It should be an exciting fall, spring, excuse me.
What do they plan to do over the winter, if anything? I mean, is it just kind of?
So it should, knock on wood, hopefully be completed before the winter.
Oh, really?
So, like I said, the outfield is more or less all complete. I talked to Dennis Fazio today, so I get all my updates right here. The next thing, he said they're gonna start ASAP on ripping down the backstop and constructing the dugouts and backstop, and as far as putting down the actual surface, they're gonna use DuraEdge clay, is what I was told, it's very high-quality clay, that shouldn't take too long. Right now, the big thing is the fencing, to get the fencing up.
I couldn't remember if the dugouts, do these, do they have the?
Yeah, so they are gonna put roofs, I guess, tops, rooftops on it, yeah. So they, I don't know if anybody's been out there, they took home plate and they repositioned, they moved it out probably about 15 feet and tilted it a little bit towards, towards the high school a little bit more, because there's not a lot of room there to the left with, there's a creek behind there.
Yep.
So they tilted that, so they're gonna pour new, new concrete for new dugouts.
Nice.
And they're gonna move the backstop up a little bit, and they're gonna finally have an outfield fence for, if anybody's familiar with Wakefield softball, our girls have never had a fence before because down at Vest Field, it's, you know, really made for adult softball, there's no fence, so we have a few girls on the team that can hit home runs, and I know they're pretty excited to actually have a fence to potentially hit one out, so.
Were they holding back before?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, so, all very positive stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan.
Awesome.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I have is school committee retreat, you know, this Saturday was not working for most people, so the other date that was available with the MAS C rep was gonna be November 23rd. I know most of you said that was gonna work, I think that Tom has a conflict, right?
I have a conflict. I thought the 19th, most of us were fine with.
She wasn't, though.
Why, didn't she give us that date?
The 19th is a Tuesday.
October 19th, yeah.
That was the day that I, that would be this coming Saturday, and I got a lot of pushback from several members about this Saturday, that it wasn't gonna work, so it was, so that's why I moved it. I had several members saying that this, that was not gonna be working.
So is it going to be the 23rd?
Well, I have it penciled in for the 23rd at this point, so we'll have further discussions, otherwise it's gonna push out to January.
Is that a problem, generally?
Is that a problem to push it out?
Well, we can talk about that. I think that, you know, we, I think the information that is reviewed during that, that type of presentation is timely, and I think that, you know, it's information that needs to be heard, and it's always good for people to hear from another source other than me, usually, you know?
I agree, that's why I'm hoping we can push it out so that we can all attend.
So let me work with the MAS C and see what other dates she might have, but, you know, December is completely out for other people, or where are we at? No, it's not? Okay, so I'll see if she has something for, like, maybe she could do the 7th, I'll give her a call.
We did it last December, right?
I don't remember what the date was.
I know it was in the, I thought it was in the month of December, so.
Okay, I will reach out to her, okay. MAS C conference is the first week of November. I know Karen sent out a request, if you wanted to attend, she would take care of your registrations, whatever days you were able to go. If you haven't got back to her, you should probably do so quickly. Metco meeting for the school committee, right at the moment, is we still on for the 12th?
November 12th.
November 12th. I will not be here, but that has been scheduled, our new Metco director started today, I met her this morning, so that date is set, and there'll be more information to follow with the location and exact times and whatnot. And lastly, tri-board meeting is this Thursday, 7 o'clock. The official agenda has been posted to the town website, I checked that this afternoon, and so, you know, Sherry Dalton posted for all three committees, so I think it might be up more than once, but the complete agenda is there, and there'll be slides from Doug, from Steve, and from Dan Sherman.
Are those included in the agenda?
Not included in the agenda, no, those will.
Do we have access to those before the meeting?
I sent you some, but not, I haven't seen the whole.
So the agenda that we did get, has it changed?
Um, not really.
Except for additional information?
Not really, but I think the one that's posted on the town website might be easier to follow, because it's in the format that we're more accustomed to.
Okay, good.
So I think that might be easier for you. Okay, superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Callanan. With your permission, I'd like to take my topics just out of order so that I can welcome Katherine Dingra to the table, just to kind of share her presentation on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. This is data that she'll give you a little, little history on the data and how it was collected and the frequency by which we collect the data. She also shared this information with the administration and teachers at the high school, and also the administration at the middle school, and, which I know Adam has shared and his administrative team has shared some of that information just to start the school year. But we're fortunate to have Katherine here and for all of the help that she kind of gives us in this area, so Katherine Dingra.
Hello. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Katherine Dingra, and I work for the town of Wakefield through the Health Department, and really my job is to coordinate, you know, really to emphasize the health and wellness of our community at whole, as a whole, especially our children, and really to coordinate the work between the Health Department, the town, the schools, the police, and really to make sure that we're building a healthyest community as possible. So I'm gonna present this data today and talk about some of the strategies that we're doing to address some of the things that we'll, we'll see today. So the 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, a little bit of overview about it, the survey was administered in April 2019. We've been doing it pretty much consistently for every two years since 2011, so we have a lot of trend years of data. The tool is developed by the Centers for Disease Control, and a couple of years ago, we started doing a regional collaborative with the rest of the Middle Sex League, so we could compare how we were trending with the rest of the schools in our league. John Snow was hired to be the independent evaluator, so they're really the public health professionals that evaluate the tool, and it's funded by Leahy Health, so that's nice, takes the burden off the district, which we've had for a few years. Just a few questions, things that come up, a lot of times people say, "How valid is this? Does students, you know, really tell the truth?" And it's a really tested tool, they have, they put a lot of things in place to make sure the validity of the survey is credible, and, and there are a lot of checks and balances within it that would be really hard for a student to figure out, like they're, for example, they put in maybe a fake, they put in a fake drug, or they put in things where they would see if a student's indicating certain things, they would take out those surveys where they, they don't feel like there's someone's being truthful, so. The result is, we get really valid and consistent data every two years, so we can tell, you know, that students are pretty much on par year to year. I am gonna show some data where we really wanna take a look at what, what can be done, and, and really, sometimes when we look at this data, it can be overwhelming, we can think, "Oh, you know, jeez, these are a lot of delicate things that we're looking at," but we really wanna understand that balance and striking that balance between building those protective factors in our, in our community, in our schools, in our youth's lives, so they can combat those risk factors, so we really create that balance in our young people's lives. Because we know students are gonna experience risks, and they're gonna experience some of these negative things in their lives, but we know when they have these positive school and family connections, they're much less likely to have these negative outcomes, so they're much less likely to have mental health issues or experience violence or engage in risky behaviors as they get older. So we wanna build up all those protective factors in our schools by creating these positive environments, educating our parents so that they know the things to say, the things to do, and connect, making connections to more providers for our young people as they encounter these risky behaviors. So the first topic we're gonna talk about is substance use. So when we think about young people, we can think about them like a pot of boiling water, and we know that their brains are developing, and if a young person engages in substance abuse, that's really like turning up the heat, and it can boil over into a lot of long-term problems, not only for that individual child, but for the community as a whole, when we have lots of young people engaging that. So our job as a community is to really turn down that heat, decrease those risk factors and increase those protective factors that create a safe community, so. We're gonna look at some of our trend data, so we have the tobacco use data right in front of you, so combustible cigarettes, that's on the, on the left-hand side, you can see those have really trended down, we're actually below the rest of the Middle Sex League in an all-time low of past 30-day use. We use that term because that's really students who might be engaging in more regular use instead of just tried it once, so that's trended down significantly, but you can see on the right-hand side is our past 30-day e-cigarette use, and so in the kind of common terms, that's students that are juuling or using, or using vape products, and this is nicotine vaping that we're talking about, so. It peaked in 2017, we worked really hard to bring that down, but it's still, you know, pretty much on par with the rest of the Middle Sex League, and as you know from watching the news, this is something that's really impacting the whole country and our region and the whole state. So what does it look like in Wakefield? Well, Juul pods are the big, the big culprits, and you can see that, you know, hopefully you know that one Juul pod is about the same amount of nicotine as a pack of cigarettes, so really trying to understand youth use, so we've not only do the data, but we do focus groups, we do a lot of understanding what the nuances of the problem are. We actually passed a flavor ban here in Wakefield because we knew through a different survey that flavor was the primary use, reason youth decided to use. The state didn't allow us to use mint in that ban, and look over here, this is a lake cleanup that our fifth graders did last, last spring, so right along the shores of Lake Quinipawat, we see primarily mint, because that wasn't allowed in our ban, so we had all the other flavors banned. On the right side is one of the bathrooms at the high school, so you can see the mint and Juul pods there, so that kind of gives you a kind of a understanding what the issue is. You can see our Galvin data trended pretty much the same way, which is good, it shows consistently we're, we're making consistent efforts. I'm really excited about the Galvin vaping data because it dropped so significantly. I mean, that's still, you know, 4% of young people had, had used in the past 30 days, but if you talk to fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in our district, they really have gotten the message, you know, that, you know, I have two boys at the Galvin, and, you know, of course, all of our kids grew up knowing cigarette smoking wasn't good, and we see that impacting in the data, but you start to see that more at the Galvin, that these kids aren't the kids that kind of grew up in the age where, "Ooh, it's water vapor" or something, they're, they're getting that consistent message, and we're hoping that's getting across. So marijuana and THC use, that's really changed, and you know, if you talk to the SROs or anyone, we can really talk about how that use has changed, it's not a combustible joint as much as it is the THC pods that we've been hearing about in the news, the edibles, and the potency of the marijuana has changed significantly. So what does that look like on the developing adolescent brain, the brain that's trying to learn all these complex problems that they're looking at in school? What does that THC look like? Because a lot of times the, the synthetic THC capsules that we're finding are labeled 80 to 90% THC, so that's, you know, that's almost a different drug, so we're really concerned about that and what, what that does to young people. So you can see our high school marijuana use, thankfully, it's dropped down from the peak in 2017, it's stabilized, but, you know, that's, that's taken a lot of work, but we're something that we're concerned about. And then our marijuana use at the high, at the Galvin has, has remained consistent. So if you got the presentation ahead of time, you might not, you'll be able to answer this, but myth or fact, according to Wakefield's 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, 58% of 10th graders drank alcohol in the past 30 days, so I'm gonna quiz you, see if you're awake. Anyone wanna guess?
I would say true.
You say true?
False.
False, okay. So when I, when I even quizzed the high school teachers last week, or even my Wakeup Coalition, who I would think is pretty educated around this, most people do say that's true, you know, they think that 58%, so if we think most adults say that, you should see how youth react, "Oh, you know, it's 95%," when in reality, it's below 20% of 10th graders have consumed alcohol in the past 30 days. So that misperception is something that we've really worked on, and I'll explain it in our, in our strategies coming up, but we really wanna increase that perception that not everyone's doing it, so that's something that, Brendan's nodding his head because that's something that we've been working on a lot, but I'm really proud of the grade drops in alcohol use in the past 30-day use. And then, again, where, this is one area where we're lower than the Middle Sex League, and this is usually the primary drug of choice for young people, so the fact that we're lower and we've made a consistent effort, and it's showing in the data, because we're the light blue right there with past 30-day use, binge drinking especially, because that's the day, when a lot of times one of the dangerous behaviors happen, and the violence, that's down to below 13%. And then you can see that same with the Galvin, so again, the, the middle school is trending in the same direction as the high school, and we are concerned about those young people at the Galvin who are using, because, you know, what does that look like later on if, if these are 13 and 14-year-old brains getting primed?
Hey, Katherine?
Mm-hmm.
So the marijuana use at the Galvin is higher than drinking, is that what I saw?
Yes.
4%.
Yeah, that's a good, yes.
Observation, not a great observation, kinda scary.
No, but it is interesting because, you know, what, what's happening there, a lot of it, we tend to equate with the, Officer Jay said it well, it's because they're consuming it in the vaping form now, it's not, it's different, it's not as seen as so much of a bigger drug to them as, as, as the way it used to be.
Yep.
Where it was, so, that's part of it, we're, what I, what I like here, and I want Brendan and his team to take some credit too, is the perception of risk of harm is one of those things we know, if we did an overlay of the perception of risk of harm, as that goes up, you'll see use go down, so that's something where we've really tried through parent education, through our increased health education, have seen that in the orange, the perception of use of harm has gone up, and that, a lot of that has to do with education, peer-to-peer messages, and some of the work that we've done in the schools, and you can see especially around the vaping and the e-cigs.
I'm sorry to interrupt, would you mind if I asked Brendan to come up and just join you? Maybe he could speak a little bit about.
Oh, yeah, especially speaking of strategies, because I mean, my neck's gonna get sore in a minute, because we're, once we talk about strategies. And the same thing with the Galvin, that's us in the dark blue, so you can see we're higher than the rest of the Middle Sex League, and they've worked hard to get those numbers up. Ooh. Okay, so, some of the strategies that have been addressed in the, in the district to address substance use, so this is really, Brendan, I'm gonna have you talk about this first.
Yeah, absolutely. So over the past five years, we've increased health education by 200% actually. When I first came here, I think we had only three grade levels receiving health education, now we have nine grade levels, starting all the way down kindergarten, and we didn't have a district-wide curriculum either, it was just kind of each teacher taught whatever they, you know, felt appropriate, and so over the past few years, we've adopted an evidence-based health education curriculum called the Michigan Model, and our two focus areas have been social, emotional learning, and substance abuse prevention.
And so, yeah, it's been great, and we've written a lot of grants to bring in the trainers to get everyone up to, in best practices for that curriculum. A lot of what we've done is parent ed- A lot of what we've done is parent education initiatives. We have our district-wide parent university. We have newsletters, workshops. We do in-place sites at, not only in town hall, but we do them now at the high school open houses. So parents, trying to make it as easy as possible. And we've had really good attendance at everything. And our, and our high school and middle school admin are great about sending out information as trends arise. Again, partnering with athletics. Do you want to talk a little bit about this?
So we were very fortunate. We actually partnered with WCAT a couple of summers ago. And Catherine was a huge help too. We put together a, a training video for our coaches. And I know they enjoy watching it because a lot of them are in it. Officer Skillings is in it, Perry Paffs is in it. So y'all get a kick out of it, but it's a great video to train them on how to, how to talk to their student athletes about these, these issues.
And then we're also, the parent sports info nights at each season. Some of you have seen us there. But it's a great opportunity to get in front of parents. And almost every time after I present, I get phone calls or emails asking for help or reaching out for resources. So it's a great way to, just another collaboration. We have intervention strategies that have been adopted by the district, some mandated, some not. Esper was a state mandate under the opioid, Governor Baker's opioid work plan. The school-based diversion program is actually something that's somewhat new in the last year. That's where an individual gets caught either under the influence or with something. And they have to go through a multi-pronged diversion program instead of, say, a five-day suspension. They, that suspension gets reduced and they have a mandatory two-hour class with Andrew Sidroni. They do one-on-one follow-up with Suzanne Burns. They have community service. They have an essay that they have to write. So really kind of trying to understand more of what's going on with that young person. And then Suzanne will also offer support to the family and see if additional counseling or treatment is needed for those young people. And then our nurses have really stepped up. They've been trained in DITAP and the state is coming out with a vaping cessation program for school nurses. And we've actually gotten phone calls from parents asking if we have this resource. So we're, we're glad that our school nurses have been such phenomenal partners. And then again, changing the norms and traditions. So we worked hard to create the senior night tradition. So a change on that, that school culture.
I, I think I would also add in regard to the, the intervention strategies around, that are school-based at the secondary level. I think that there's been a change in philosophy within the administrative teams around restorative approaches to discipline. You know, traditionally, when students would get out of line, they would receive a consequence. And at times they would be separated from school if suspension was warranted. And, and now that the teams are really working hard to think about how to keep students close, right? By, you know, including things like community service or even service within the school as a consequence as opposed to separation. So the notion of, of keeping kids close, maintaining relationships during these times when kids are struggling or when they've made missteps have been, has been a fundamental part of the intervention strategies that are happening, both at the middle and high school. And I think that that is, I, I think we are grateful that the principals and the assistant principals have taken that on. And so I think that they deserve a lot of credit there.
Absolutely. They've been great. And like I said, the work, and it's nice because we work with so many different people in the school and so many different projects. But one of the reasons we wanted this diversion program is we had so many young graduates who are out in the community who are really struggling. And we want to be able to identify them earlier and wrap around more services when somebody is seeing them more regularly. So a lot of positives there.
You know, Catherine, I know you and I have spoken and we applaud the governor's stance in kind of outlawing, you know, vapes and kind of stopping the sale of those. But I, I wanted to say I appreciate the resources that you shared with us, that I was also able to share with our administrators and our nurses because just stopping the selling of vaping doesn't address the problem in its entirety because we have students that are addicted to this like we have students that are addicted to cigarette smoking. And so just stopping the selling is, is just part of, and a step to really address it. But the other parts are really thinking about how do we intervene? How do we support during this time when they're, when these devices are taken off the market? What do we do? And I, I wanted to thank you for the resources that you shared to us on the school side that we also passed along to our administrators and nurses and, and families that have sought those resources as well.
And then along with the adult strategies, we have two fantastic peer leadership groups. We have our youth action team leaders and then they oversee two groups, one at the high school and one at the middle school. And those youth do a number of different strategies and that's overseen by our youth coordinator, Kara Showers. And then we have Melissa Tarnas at the Galvin and Lisa Silver at the high school. But they, you can see a number of the initiatives they do to make an impact. And that's over eighty youth are involved in those two clubs. And then when you add in the, the leaders and everything, you're almost at a hundred youth that are involved in making a positive culture and, and showing that, you know, majority of kids aren't doing these things. For our mental health statistics, again, emotional well-being and self-harm. Sometimes these numbers are really hard to look at because we're thinking of, you know, thirty percent. What does that mean? That's more than the sophomore class plus, you know, a few more homerooms. Felt so sad or hopeless almost every day in a row for two weeks that they stopped doing their regular activities or usual activities. And as you can see, this is something that we've been measuring for a while. And unfortunately, this is something that's trending nationally in this direction and you'll see a lot around that. But something that we're really concerned around. And then on the right side, you'll see hurt or injured oneself on purpose during the past year at sixteen percent. So. And then we have our suicidal thinking or suicidal ideation numbers. So you can see we're slightly higher than the rest of the, the middle sex league. And then say, with the Galvin too, it's pretty much consistent, but something that we're, you know, very aware of and concerned about and talking about. So we'll, I'll talk about some of the strategies to address social, emotional well-being. We really looked at these numbers along with a lot of other data pieces and did cross tabs on gender grades, really trying to dig down, especially with the school social, emotional behavioral team. So twenty sixteen established a social, emotional learning plan. And district has a social, emotional learning by monthly meeting led by the district SEL coordinator. These meetings are wonderful. A lot of professional development happens, a lot of trans, figuring out transitions between elementary to middle school and then understanding the resources available. And they're run by Andrew Sidroni and they're a great resource. And I'm, I'm glad to see that's something that's been new in the last few years. The Interface Referral Service, that's something that's split between the school committee, thank you, and the town. Available to anyone, birth to death in Wakefield. And since twenty sixteen, we've had two hundred and ten district student referrals. So that's really good. About twenty percent from the high school, almost fifty percent from the Galvin and thirty-one percent from the elementary school. And then in addition to that, we've had a lot of adults take advantage of it. So not only are our students support staff and teachers and administrators giving these cards and making these resource referrals for students, but also their family members and parents and things like that. So that number is actually a bit higher. And when we presented to our, our high school faculty last week, they just couldn't say enough good things. Those that make those referrals, you know, it used to be a full-time job if you needed to get your child help between your insurance and availability and openings and stuff. And it's really made a big impact on that. And then we have our Elliott Crisis Management Team, which is a phenomenal, a resource and Wakefield uses them well. I've talked to other neighboring communities and we definitely utilize that contract and take full advantage of the resources there. We have a phenomenal student support website that our district's social, emotional team keeps updated. Over a hundred faculty trained in youth mental health first aid, which is an eight-hour course. We have increased parent education workshop and speakers. So this year we have three different leading expert speakers coming into the district to educate parents. And for example, we had Lynn Lyons and over six hundred parents filled the Galvin auditorium into the, into the cafeteria. This is one that I've been advocating for a long time. We now have a full-time adjustment counselor at the high school. That was a position created this year. We've also, you know, increased the amount of student support staff at the Galvin significantly. And it's spread down to the elementary school this year as well. But just having the full-time adjustment counselor in the high school, that was one thing that we looked at the data. One of the reasons we brought in Interface because we looked at that felt so sad and hopeless number. And then we also asked students how many were seeing, who were getting professional help for that, the help that they needed. And there was a big gap. So we said, how can we bridge that gap? And we brought in the Interface resource, but we knew we needed someone in the high school that, you know, maybe it wasn't someone that was dealing with students on IEPs and, and those students getting the help that they needed. But what about the other students who might not be getting the support that they needed? And I know the full-time adjustment counselor has already been busy getting referrals from staff and some few student self-referrals as well. And then we have a five-part PD series on mental health. Those fill up very fast. And we had the, had the SOS screening, which is the Signs of Suicide screening implemented with the eighth graders, which Jen Hart kind of ran this initiative and.
Yeah, I was, I was on that team too. Jen did a great job and Andrew Sidroni.
Yeah, it was very successful this past year. And then they're going to, they piloted it and now they're going to use it in the tenth grade too. And they really were able to wrap some services around students that were in immediate crisis and many of whom were flying under the radar again. It's that those students that are flying under the radar, how can we get them the help they need? Because addressing mental health issues in school leads to school performance. We all know that. So, you know, not only do we want, you know, our students well at the bind, we want them to be able to learn. And I think Anne, you said that best once when, when you, you know, as a, as a counselor. So looking at our violence and bullying data, something again, we're concerned about the online bullying, the in-school as well because it's, it is trending down, but it's still, you know, sixteen percent of students, of high school students experienced bullying in the past few months. So really trying to understand it, pretty much the same amount experienced online bullying. And we've dug, dug a little deeper to find out what, what does that look like? These numbers I find concerning as well, the sexual contact against will and dating violence. These are something that we're, we're particularly concerned about. And we've actually had conversations in the last few weeks about how to address, address some of these. Because that's a lot of young people. When you think about nine point six percent, you know, that's over ninety students that have experienced something very traumatic. Galvin violence and bullying, so the, the frequency of bullying online in the past few months. Again, it's, it's, you know, we're not really sure why those numbers are up high. You know, one theory is that our students do get, as, as Galvin being a five through eight school, students tend to get phones really early in this community at fifth grade because they transitioned to middle school. Might not have the emotional capacity to handle that and, and might not. So that's just, you know, one theory. There's a lot, lots to explore around that. And the in-school bullying has come down. So that's, that's a positive trend. And so, you know, really continuing to build protective factors to address the bullying and the violence with the peer leadership groups. We have three different peer leadership groups working on these issues. We have the school resource officers. We have the administrators. We have a lot of community resources that we can tap into. And Brendan and I, actually, we just met with the health teachers to talk about some of the data trends that we were concerned about, especially, you know, the dating violence, the sexual contact against will. And they're actually already set in motion to bring in our respond clinician from the police department to do some trainings, to get some resources to the students. We're going to address it with the MVP program. So we already have some things in motion around that. But really trying to strategize around some, kind of those gaps. They actually, also, we saw our marijuana driving numbers increase as well. So that was something that they said, okay, we can address this in sophomore year health class. So really looking at those protective factors, at least one or teacher or adult to talk to in the school. Those numbers are down at the high school. And I, I put feelers out across the middle sex league and people said their numbers tended to be down a bit too. So that was something that we discussed at the high school when we presented this data. Why is that? Why are, you know, why are those numbers trending down? And what can we do to build those numbers up for young people? Because we know those caring adults, those protective relationships are so key in middle school and high school. For some reason, we're missing the Galvin data on this, but I believe it was asked in the survey. I just didn't see it in the report. So something that we're, Galvin, I know is, is, as well, both the high school and the Galvin are really focused on, on this trusted adult and building those positive relationships. So and just one of those spotlight strategies is the Galvin implemented their advisory group this year. So, which probably heard about where they have students grouped in about of twelve with one advisor. And they're going to meet with them on Wednesdays and other points during the year. So I've heard positive things from my children. So it's nice for them to have that other adult that they can go to in the building. But overall, Wakefield really is leading the way. Sometimes we look at these numbers and can be, you know, a little overwhelmed, but we are doing a great job. We are often asked to present at different things or other people will email us asking for, how do you set up the diversion program? How do you do this? So we really are building resources to increase those protective factors for our young people. So we are leading the way. And we have some great resources. So feel free to ask any questions. I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Brendan?
I think we covered pretty much everything.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's a lot in the report too. I mean, we look, we ask everything from bike helmet usage to physical fitness, wellness activities. So we, we combed through all the data, but we thought these were some of the most important data points and, but really wanted to highlight, you know, some of the strategies and some of the things that are concerning to us that we, you know, that we're working with across the district.
I will, I will say that our health teachers look very closely at this data. And they, they met with Catherine last week during one of the professional development days. And they really use this data to inform their decisions and what they do in class with their students.
When will the report be released for public consumption? Or is it released already?
Well, I think this'll, this'll go out today. And then I'm not sure about the middle sex league report.
I think it's in the coming month. So the plan was to get it to administrators and teachers as a first audience and then get it here to school committee and then get it out to the public. So that's the progression. But I'm, I'll double check with, with our, with JSI and also our coordinator there to just see when that is. But I believe it's in the, within the next month. So, because all, all districts, it's, I don't know if everyone's on the same timeline. We might be a little bit ahead. But I'm pretty sure it was within the first few months of school, the plan was to get this data out, share it, you know, have a progression of audience and then, and then get it out to the public. So. I'll, I can let you know more, Anne, the next school committee meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great. And one other thought. And one other thought I had, and I'm sure this is what you've been thinking too, about the increase in the unwanted sexual contact and, actually, good, I don't know if you can get to that slide. Because it struck me as being high, but I, yeah, you know, higher than other years, this latest year. And I wonder if it's the trust in being able to report it, feeling like you can, you know, not own it, but you, a student can actually sort of verbalize it, not, not look back and think, or not even give a thought to, that's just normal, you know? And it's not normal, it's not healthy, it's not helpful, you know, in any way. And then just, you know, I'm wondering if like our increase in our health education, sort of, you know, providing vocabulary and context for that kind of thing, might be, you know, part of the reason that people are just, you know, kids are thinking, this is not right, you know? I mean, we need that number to go, we need the actual acts to go down.
Absolutely.
But we also, you know, have to recognize that we first have to sort of call it out.
Yeah.
You know, and just say, this is, this is not the right way to behave. And it doesn't have to be acts that are overly dramatic, you know, sort of things that you see on TV. It can be very subtle, you know, kinds of acts and sort of opening the eyes to the kids to be able to name it and say, this is not, you know, good for me.
Yeah. I know this was definitely a disappointing piece of data that we saw because we actually wrote a grant to start up a MVP program here in Wakefield a few years ago, mentors in violence prevention. And this slide right here, these three pieces of data were huge, you know, points that we brought awareness to within the school. I know we had like some poster campaigns where we actually put that data out there to do exactly what you just said, to get it out there, call it what it is and to let people know that it's not appropriate and that it needs to stop. So to see it actually, the numbers go up is pretty disappointing. And, you know, who knows if it's more, like you said, awareness around it now. But it's definitely something that we are gonna continue to...
And continuing to put the responsibility on the, this is not gonna come out right, but I can't think of the right phrase, but sort of the potential perpetrator.
Yeah.
Right? So it's always been the responsibility of the person who's been victimized to be the one to step forward. And then maybe something happens, right? But it's really with the MVP program, you know, we really want to get so far ahead of that, that we don't have to rely on the person who's been wrong to have to take that on. And a lot of kids are not in a good place to be able to do that kind of thing. Yeah, thank you.
Tom?
No, never mind. She answered it already.
I've got something quick. First, just thanks for a great presentation and informative. I love data. It's great to see these kinds of slides. And I was really excited when I saw the substance abuse numbers kind of trending down and that's great news. Some of this other data feels heavy and hard to see. And I guess I'd just ask that as we're entering the budget season, to be asking for what you guys think we need in order to address these numbers. Because they're scary. So thank you.
I also just want to thank you for the presentation. Of course, it was very informative. Was there any data collected in regards to social media use?
Yes, so we asked about...
I know there's a question around screen time. I think amount of hours per day on screen time while there's TV, computer.
I'm just wondering if that links into, you know, this type of data, you know, where some kids might see it on social media and think it's okay. And then all of a sudden, they get into that situation and they realize it isn't because social media probably isn't maybe as real as it, you know, depicts.
Yeah.
So I just didn't know if they had an opportunity to answer that in a way where they could possibly link that connection with social media.
Well, they, I mean, the online bullying, there were, when the data comes out, I definitely encourage you to look at that because it talks about the ways in which they were bullied online too. Because that's really interesting and the gender breakdown is interesting. Definitely more online bullying happens for females, I think, and then in school it was for boys. But, yeah, it's, you know, unfortunately, it's a reality. But they, I know some of the, they're trying to address this at the schools, especially at the Galvin, through their technology classes and things like that, so that's...
So maybe the data will reflect a difference in a couple of years. And I also just wanted to make one more point, how I know that the student services program at the Galvin is amazing and it seems like the, you know, the website that we have, the services that the children receive, the check-ins that they get every Wednesday, I mean, I think that's incredible. And I do know that, you know, what happens when they transition to the high school, where, you know, they seem to be very cared for and managed appropriately at the Galvin. They come to the high school and now thankfully, we do have one adjustment counselor. But maybe that will help also close the gap with, you know, helping kids' overall needs, social, emotional.
And I know our new director of guidance at the high school has been really engaged in this data as well and he's excited, you know, he's been partnering and coming down to the health class and coming and trying to figure out ways to incorporate more access points for young people that are struggling. So that's, I'm excited by that.
Is there a strategy to try and increase the numbers of the teacher or adult in the school system that children feel comfortable going to?
Yeah, so that's a great, I know both administrators, so I'm not gonna speak on their strategies do...
Yeah, I know this has definitely been an emphasis the past couple of years, so to see that number go down is a little surprising. I know one of, during one of the staff meetings at the high school a couple of years ago, I think they went around like looking at all the students, like IDs and, you know...
Map relationships.
Yeah, putting a name to a face. Just to be able to, you know, say hello and actually use their first name, whether you have them in class or not.
Even our youth leaders in both the Galvin and the middle school do, they have a high school faculty newsletter, so they talk about what they see in the trusted adults to kind of, you know, talk to the faculty and say, this is what we look for in our trusted adults, you know? Talk to us when you come into class about what you did over the weekend or something. So they've done some of those strategies. In the middle school, they're implementing a strategy too this year, but it's definitely a work in progress.
I will say, we're very fortunate. A lot of our coaches are also teachers and, just me personally, I see a lot of really great relationships where some kids will open up to their coach that's also their teacher and then they can help them with whatever support they need.
Oh, I know. I know a lot of the teachers in the district and I know they're all wonderful people, which is why I'm surprised that the data has actually gone down.
I do. So in regard to your question, Tom, do we have a strategy? The answer is yes. You know, one of the changes in advisory at the middle school is just this very notion of, you know, if the students don't come to us, we're gonna schedule ourselves into their lives through advisory in smaller groups and it's not academic time. It's a time for students to get to know one another. It's a time for students to get to know their advisor. And they talk about what's happening at the school and that's done at all. So time is dedicated within the schedule. So students are scheduled to go with their advisee, advisor groups. They have activities and the very notion of that process, which was a teacher-led process, at the very heart of that is to address this notion that every, we want every student to have at least, at least one trusted adult, at least one trusted adult in both the middle school and the high school. And I know the high school's working on this as well with their peer leaders. And if I could also go back to Anne's comments about the relational aggression and the kind of the dating violence comments, you know, we had, last year, we had Malcolm Asley come to the high school. If you don't know Malcolm Asley, his daughter was killed and had a very tumultuous, violent dating relationship with her boyfriend. And so Malcolm Asley is a former school administrator and spoke to kids very clearly in a very heartfelt way about his story and about his daughter. And he talked about, you know, the telltale signs that I think Anne started to allude to, which were, you know, relational signs when people are in, you know, relationships with one another where, you know, when there starts to be kind of controlling behavior, whether it be manipulative or not, whether, you know, someone seems to be taking advantage of someone's time or really trying to control what someone is doing with their friends or with their free time. And he asked kids to really pay attention to that and to, and if they see that, to really let another adult know. So he described it in a way that was, I think, kids understood. And when they thought about it and talked about it a little bit, they were like, huh, we've seen some of that, like we, and we should let someone know. So I think those are just a few examples of things that we're doing. But, and the data is, as you said, Suzy, hard to look at, right? As a parent and as a teacher, it's hard data to look at. But I think what it does is it highlights some of the work that we really need to be better at, right? So, thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Were you able to draw any like direct lines between the bullying or the unwanted contact and the kind of, and suicide tendencies? There's one leading to the other?
I don't think, I don't think we can, I don't think we've done that before.
Yeah, we haven't done any correlations like that before. I'm not saying that they're not related, we just haven't looked at...
Right, you know, one time, one thing that we can do is we're allowed to ask for a few like cross tabs from the evaluator, so that might be something that we can look at as well.
I'm just curious if we can see a direct correlation.
Yeah.
Well, neither would I, but it might help you project us to, you know, who will be in need of help, like if they've experienced this bullying, they could be a suicide potential and you could kind of intercede earlier.
Right.
Where my mind was going. This presentation, where is it gonna be published? On the school website?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we presented it here on TV, so...
Well, I have a couple of members out that would want this data, so I want to tell them where to find it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Any further questions? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
So just moving on with superintendent remarks, just an update on professional development. We had our second content-based professional development. I know that you all know, but we have five content-based PD half-days and we have five as part of our five-part series that includes choice, right? And so we, last week, we had our second on the half-day Wednesday. We had our second PD content day. And the day was dedicated to, everyone was in groups, working and learning with and from one another. In our K two groups, we were looking at math and we use protocols to look at student work to really look at where there, if there were trends. And we also looked at formative assessments. And formative assessments are different than summative assessments. Formative assessments give us an opportunity to really inform our teaching, right? And so these aren't assessments that are done necessarily for grades as much as they're kind of a gauge or a measure for us to think about how students are progressing and how well we're teaching content. So that was a focus in K two. In grades three and four, we took a look at iReady data. And I think that that was a nice start. We have what we call an iReady tool, which is a more efficient way to assess, you know, instead of, we used to, a few years ago, give common assessments. We used to have to wait. It was difficult for teachers to often correct and kind of get student work to the table. And iReady, I think, has helped us in terms of efficiency. And so we, these are new assessments that we've brought in as part of an assessment package. But that gives us kind of, it gives us ready data right after the students take the assessment because online, they're online. And so we did a data review in grades three and four. Our art and music teachers did some curriculum mapping of the new standards that were just published from the Department of Elementary and Education. Our PE and health teachers took a look at the Michigan model and did some mapping and did some work with assessments. Am I missing anything there, Brendan?
Yes. Also, the health and mental health teachers met with Catherine as well to go over the wire.
Thank you. And so our nurses, our ELL or ESL teachers and our adjustment counselors all met with kind of their job-alikes. So people are doing the same work like them. They get together on the professional development day just to kind of talk about caseloads, ESL work, challenges and what they're doing to kind of meet those challenges. It's actually a nice opportunity for our job-alikes or for people that are often singletons in a school to be able to have a professional community like that. And we want to dedicate time and space for those teachers to be able to get together and talk about their work. Our special ed teachers, a cohort of them had a representative from the Cotting School to talk about assistive technology. Another special ed group was working with paraeducators, just on kind of working efficiently with students with disabilities. And so our secondary content PD was unpacking the standards. And what we did is we did kind of, we had a focus on writing high-impact learning objectives so that students can understand what and why they're learning what they are. And so that's just a very quick snapshot of our content PD. Our very first meeting for our five-part series will start October 23rd and we'll have more information to share then. And so that's it for professional development and for our update right now. I did want to just share just some information on MCAS. In our next meeting, we'll be doing a review of MCAS data. But I did want to share with the committee, in case you all get any questions, that in the fall, in November, we normally have retakes for students that need to retake their MCAS because they maybe did not meet the grade that they needed to pass MCAS. And you need, you need to pass MCAS to graduate, right? And so, but there's a wrinkle this fall. And the little change here is that if you remember back to the summer and the media blitz around the question, there was an open response question that was asked in the 10th grade English Language Arts section that was really insensitive, asked in a way that really wasn't done that well. And so the department did an analysis of, first of all, they invalidated that singular question, so they took that out of the mix. But they also realized that it affected students' scores. So I think that they could have done it in a way and recalculated their scores so it wasn't negatively impacted, but it looks like they didn't do that. Their response to that was that they gave students and high schools and students an opportunity to retest for the entire test, not just for one section, but for the entire ELA test. If they felt like their score was negatively impacted in a way that could have precluded them for competing for the Abigail Adams Scholarship or for the Copley Mastery, the Certificate of Mastery, which also, that's one piece of data that will allow you to apply for some other scholarships. So they gave us very, the Department of Education gave Wakefield Memorial So, um, so they gave us very, of, the Department of Education gave Wakefield Memorial High School a very short turnaround time. To check with students to see if they wanted to take their MCAS again. Um, and very few students did, uh, which is not, not a surprise. And so.
I would think it would only be the, those who got, um, I forget what the terminology was, uh, uh, was it unsatisfactory or, or needs improvement?
Well, those students that need to take it, need to take it. These are students that may have already scored in the ex- meeting or exceeding the standard, so.
Wanted a higher score.
They, so to get, to get the Abigail Adams Scholarship. You need to score the top twenty-five percent in all three assessments in the state, okay? And to get, be eligible for the Coplek Certificate of Mastery. You need to score in the exceeding the standard in at least one of the assessments. So, you know, I think the intent was good on the part of the department. But I think that, you know, um, I just wanted to share with you all in case anyone asks you questions, what, what that's all about. So in regard to return, so we made the offer to two hundred students, um, in the sophomore class. And we, we got, I think, ten replies. So there, there are ten students that are interested in doing it, so we're excited for those ten. Wish them the best of luck, um, but I just wanted to share that piece of information to you. And we, we will be talking more about MCAS and on the October twenty-ninth, school committee meeting. Um, just a, a little glimpse of the high school, assuming this question would come up. So how many of our kids met or exceeded the standards? And, you know, I think it's seventy-five percent, um, but we'll have a accurate number and a breakdown there, but. Um, well, I think with the new scoring, I think you could still get into, in the other categories and still pass. Yeah, so, well, we can talk more about the certificate of determination, the new scoring and on October twenty-ninth. So that's, um, my last piece of information, with the exception of I have an announcement that in our next meeting. Um, not only will we, we be, we be talking about, um, the two thousand nineteen MCAS results. We will also be starting a discussion, uh, about late start times at the high school. And Chris has asked me to share some, some information and some data about schools in our surrounding area. That have made the change in what we can, uh, learn from them and what they're willing to share.
Isn't that, the union has something in their contract dictating the start times of the high school, correct?
The, they do, well, the, the high school's schedule is memorialized at, in a side letter in the contract.
Which is binding in the contract.
Which is binding in the contract right now. And so it's, it's one of the things that will, I think, will lead to other conversations. But I think as a starting point here, I think we need to share just kind of who is making that change and, and why they're making it and what they're learning.
I, I disagree. I think we should wait until you discuss it and deal with it at negotiations. Why spin our wheels over something we'd have no control over? And also it could lead to a charge of bad faith bargaining at the labor board.
Okay.
Wait, I'm not always.
My, I, I guess my opinion differs, isn't it? There's no sense in even bringing it to the negotiation table if it's not something we want. And we don't know if we want it till we ask questions.
But it could also lead to other areas where it could give the appearance that the school committee is dictating. What is discussed at negotiations. We have members on the committee, including the superintendent, at the negotiation table. Something that should be discussed at negotiation table should only be discussed at negotiation table. And then if and then, if they were decide, if they decide that's what they wanna do, then it should be brought back to us.
But we're just discussing.
We're just asking, we're just asking how it's working out.
Could lead to bad faith bargaining charges.
If you like, I can check with the attorney, see if you're correct.
Right, but, but Tom, other school districts are doing the same thing.
Do other school districts have it in their contract? Do they have start times in their contract?
They have start times in their contract.
And they've, yes, but were they negotiated before they changed them? So if they, obviously they were negotiated out. If other districts have changed their start times, it was negotiated out.
There's a discussion happening in the district that I currently work in.
Okay, but that's, that's not Wakefield. I don't really care what other districts are doing.
I'm saying that there's precedent for this.
We'll get a, a, a opinion on that, Tom. Thank you.
Thanks for the feedback, Tom. Appreciate it. So, um, so that's it for my comments. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Quick question for you.
Sure.
Did we hire a food services person?
We did.
Okay. I'm forgetting from the, cause there was somebody and then there wasn't somebody, but we did hire someone.
Danielle Collins started today.
Oh, today.
Today. Yeah, yeah. I think I said in our last meeting that, uh, we'll have a new person starting today.
Okay.
Metco.
And Glavia Smith also started today. Chris announced that, um, at the beginning of the meeting. And we couldn't be happier to have both adults on board. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thanks. That's it for me.
Okay. On subcommittee reports, uh, finance and facilities, Doug and I met this morning just to try to. Uh, move ahead the, uh, the schedule, which we haven't finalized. However, uh, we do plan to meet with the FinCom people on, uh, which I haven't even told you about yet.
I know.
Uh, cause it just came up this morning, uh, October twenty-fifth. At seven thirty AM. They, any meetings we're gonna, that we're gonna involve, uh, FinCom, we've been asked to make it Wednesdays and, or Fridays with it?
Um, Wednesdays or Fridays, correct.
So, um, you know, it's clear with, they're not necessarily gonna s- sit in on every one of our meetings. But Wednesdays and Fridays was the best for them. So we're, uh, accommodating that with the, with the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Um, I did ask Tom for an update on, uh, labor. And, uh, he said things are progressing, but, uh, did not really share much more than that.
I guess I'm the only, I'm the last man standing, right? Um, yes, they're progressing.
Student services?
Uh, we met on, um, October eighth. And we're still trying to work together on creating the surveys to kind of figure out, um, to get a nice snapshot of the first quarter. And, um, we will remeet on October twenty-eighth. To, um, hopefully, um, get those surveys complete with a timeline to have some information back, um, before the end of November.
Great. And policy?
Um, so we are continuing to work on kind of a number of different policies. We've got the nut slash, actually not nut. Life, um, life-threatening allergy policy that's still, um, in discussion. Um, we've got bullying and harassment policies that are with legal review. Um, we're doing some work looking at our acceptable use policy, which is, um, pretty detailed and hard to, um, consume. And trying to figure out how can we simplify that without kind of losing, um, uh, the, the completeness and the detail that is required. So we're doing some work around that. Um, those are all things that are kind of in discussion. Um, and we have, uh, our next meeting scheduled on the twenty-ninth of October.
That's gonna be a busy day for you.
It is.
Our, the, the school committee's next meeting will be Tuesday, oh, uh, school committee's next meeting is this Thursday. The tri-board meeting, uh, at seven PM at the Galvin. And then the next regular school committee meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, here at WCAT. Uh, school committee comments?
Twenty, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-ninth.
November twenty?
October.
Oh, okay.
October, did I say November?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, my bad.
That's okay. Thank you.
October twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you.
I'm jumping ahead. Ann?
No comments.
Go ahead. Susie?
Um, my only update is, um, I attended as the liaison to the Sustainable Wakefield, um, uh, group. Um, I attended a meeting, uh, last Thursday, um, where we had four representatives from the high school. Who are going to be, um, also committee liaisons. All four of them wrote really compelling letters about why they wanted to be a part of the organization. And, um, and the, the group decided to have all of them join, which was great. And they, they were there for the whole meeting the other day. And they talked a little bit about what they're doing here at the high school, um, with their recycling club. And are looking, we're looking for other ways that they can kind of contribute. Um, and so there was some good discussion that happened between the high school students and the Sustainable Wakefield Group. Um, we also had parents from the Greenwood, um, come and talk about some of the activities that they're doing there. Around composting and gardens and, um, some other things that they are trying to figure out how to replicate. Um, and so there's just discussions, kind of side discussions going on about that. And then, um, Andy Bray also came and spoke regarding, um, uh, the state of the state with recycling in our schools. And, um, and, uh, and I did see that on the agenda for Thursday at the tri-board meeting. That there is a slide that talks about kind of sustainability and, um, that that will be a discussion item for Thursday. So I think that's all good news. That's it.
Just wanted to wish the Woodville Bears good luck on their teddy trot this Saturday. Christine, did you have anything?
Nope.
Outside, thank you.
And the, um, I did attend, uh, the forum that, uh, Jason Lewis had, uh, last week at, uh, Stoner Middle School. Uh, regarding, uh, his, and I can't remember the name of his new, uh, bill.
Opportunity Act.
Opportunity Act. And the, uh, the, the gist of the impact for Wakefield. The biggest benefit that, uh, I was taking away was the inclusion of sped transportation. Uh, in, um, eligibility for reimbursement of the, on, on the circuit breaker. So that, that, that would be a big number for us. Um, a, a lot of the parts of the bill really pertain more to urban districts. Uh, they are adding some extra chapter seventy money. They are adding some, um, a hundred and fifty million dollars to the MSBA over time. Um, it's a very slow rollout on a lot of these things. Although I believe he said the, um, the transportation eligibility would be, uh, immediate. So, uh, right?
You're on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would think I would like to invite our legislative team in, uh, sometime in the near future to, to talk about things like that. So, um, that would be a, s- an additional, uh, future item for us. Okay, uh, given that, and no further comments, uh, have motion to adjourn.
Uh, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion's made in second. If all of those in favor, that would be unanimous. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.